Order, would you please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Everybody's really well trained.
Good to be here.
Well, next thing, if you approve of the minutes of the last meeting.
There was, there was one correction needs to be made. The vote on the alcohol for the for comes to wasn't four zero in favor. It was three in favor, one opposed.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes from our last meeting as amended.
I'll second that.
So the motion by second by Chris to approve the minutes with the amendment for the, to that vote, all those in favor. Thank you. Next, our department reports and yeah.
Hi, good evening. Had the vault toilets pumped. There's one at the east Monmouth boat launch and there's one at the beach on Cotton noggin. The East Monmouth one is fine. There was hardly any additional trash or dumpage in it. This was reported to me that the one at the beach has an excessive amount of empty aluminum cans in it that they had to work around to get the vault pumped out. So.
Did they collect the deposits?
They did not. They actually have, they had to clean it, their machine. It just so, just I don't know. I, I don't have any more signs I can put up that says don't put trash in here, but I probably put another one up, but it's the, I'm assuming ice fishermen in the winter don't want to take care of their empty cans there's. So we'll just have to monitor that a little bit. That was the only negative report on that. Otherwise they appear to be in good shape. We've got them cleaned up really well as best we can at the moment and stocked up otherwise. So hopefully the rest of the summer will be trouble free with them.
Dan, is there a trash can available during the winter?
There is. There's multiple.
Okay.
Maybe I shouldn't blame ice fishermen because I am one, but I, I don't know what the deal is, but I just figured I'd pass it on that. You know, it was a minor inconvenience for him this time and they continue to fill it up.
Were they, have a big issue? One other little detail, were they, were they alcoholic cans?
Yes, sir.
Uh huh. Well, that might explain some of the problem.
Tomorrow for the first time in two years, the public course department will be attending the highway congress up in Scotty again. Thought by maybe OT, the whole crew was going up. We're getting some training in, much needed, touch up training. We're looking at new equipment, talking to vendors, seeing what's going on. So looking forward to that group trip tomorrow. We got Sanborn Road patched as best we could. Took 12 yards of hot patch to get the trenches filled in. It was a good mix, meaning it just, it's set up really well. Some belt, this one set really well and hoping fingers crossed it'll hold until we need pavement down later this year. If not, we'll patch it again. Been hitting other potholes around town as pointed out by residents or as we've noticed most of them run the roads that I have fingers crossed can get pavement on this year. So obviously we're back in this building. There's water here. We're good to go. That project is done. I landscaped as best I could with this. And we were able to excavate at the town office parking lot for the light pole. The electric company was able to fix the brakes for the lights and actually found an additional one just by chance, which was nice. So, so that's taken care of as well. Transfer station wise. Amazingly enough, they're still turning people around. This past weekend, we turned around residents from Manchester and Sabattas who thought that they could dump there. I have no reason or explanation for why, but that they did. And I've noticed even with the summer residents in that my tonnage is, is starting to go down just a little. I think we are curtailing the excess that was coming in quite well. So and as was brought to my attention by Justin earlier, we are out of compost that we usually have at the transfer station to residents courtesy. Just boils down to, we haven't had the time to get our pile at the town pit turned over and usable. We haven't had the time to haul the stuff we have at the transfer station and exchange it with the gentleman who takes that and gives us fresh ready to go. It's, it's, it's on the agenda. It's just manpower and time to get other projects done. So for the residents wondering, well, as soon as I can get some out there, I will.
I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
Good. I, I, I know I got a couple of phone calls over the past few weeks on the issue of paving and roads.
Yes.
And could you give just for those who are listening at home, folks, an idea of the timing of paving? And a little bit about maybe what you're seeing in terms of costs? What, what they should be expecting for the paving of the roads that are definitely in need of.
Yep. Costs at the moment are up $20 a tonne, which will seriously curtail how much I can pave. The roads that are that I want pavement on no matter what are Sanborn Road. All the whole length of it. South Monmouth Road from Fish Atry to 126. The very small section of Oak Hill Road intersection. Norris Hill Road from the Blue Road intersection up to Academy Street. And Blue Road from Main Street to the Norris Hill intersection. And on the north side of town, Wilson Pond Road absolutely needs pavement as well. I won't know till I get the bids back. How much I'll be able to do. My plan at this point to see what the price of pavement is and looking at how much pavement I want to do and the money I have available. Some of those roads may only get a shim coat this year as a Band-Aid, but I feel it would be better than doing nothing. And maybe only finish coating one road. I'd rather put shim coats on multiple roads just to try and ease it. Until I have the bids back and the price, you know, locked in, I won't be able to make a final decision on some of that.
And the bids are due when?
Bids are ready to go. I'm we'll send them out the next week or two, but they know they won't be back till after the vote. I, I mean, I need to make sure that, you know, we're all good to go. Paving timeline could be anywhere from first week of July to sometime in September. It's going to depend how we follow the schedule, how much paving we're doing. It's, it's a moving target.
Any, any sense of the cause of the problem with Sanborn Road? It seems really odd that that would fall apart that quickly.
It's actually been about 14 years since it was topped. And I had some paving company look at it just to tell me what was going on. And basically the, what they said was the tar, it oxidized, it lost its, its ability to hold itself together. And the water getting into it, it's just broken away in the, in the spots that are constantly don't have proper drainage, which I'll be addressing before it's paved. And the other sections, you can see where it's starting to break. So if I just did patch sections, then I'd have the same problem in the other sections next year. So it's just, just all pavement and it's lived its life.
Just one question. Do you have any number of how many people have been turned away, say over the last month? Does anybody track in that or?
Roughly 40 people.
Okay. Well, that's good. I mean, that, that that certainly justifies the effort.
I think so, based on, especially on the coverage I'm seeing for things. It's I think it's, it's definitely helping.
But everybody is, any question, any other questions? No. Thank you.
Well, I need notes because I can't pull it off the top of my head like he does.
I printed this out today, seen it out today was the first of the year. So you guys would have, I did put a last page in there for Mr. Ludwig. I did a little more digging and was able to pull that information out for him. Thank you. We handled 361 complaints in the month of May. Hundred nine of those were dispatch calls, 252 were self-initiated calls. You can see there were six arrests made on the back. It breaks it down. What the arrests were for, a couple of your eyes. Violation of court order and couple warrants.
So it wasn't, they, they didn't steal a VCR. It was violation of court order.
Lately, the court released. I think I put a free sign on mine.
What about a beta?
Theta Max.
You have any questions on, on this? Pretty selfish feeling. I thought you can go down through. On a good side of thing, I was notified by Cork last Friday, flywheel for the cruiser is in after nine weeks. Hopefully we'll get it back in the next nine weeks. We had assisted the school with, you know, bike upon, just went around and blocked some roads for them so they cross safely. That went well. Motorcycle run that we had on Saturday. Fire department came and helped us at two intersections, Main Street and 132 and South Monmouth Road and 126. And that went without, then because of the weather, they didn't generate the numbers they were hoping. They only had like 35, 40 bikes involved. So we took an hour of our time to cover the intersection for a minute and a half and it was all over. Other than that, that's pretty much it. Thank you. Julie, do you want to have anything?
Yeah, sure. I'll do a brief. You know, we're gearing up for our summer season. We're starting to see seasonal residents trickling in, which is always great. Lot of them are seniors and they look forward to coming back and having a kind of a quiet summer. Always love to see them. Starting to prep for our summer reading program, which we often have 80 kids sign up for it. Not all of them finish, but we get off to an enthusiastic start. This year's theme is oceans of possibility. So we're looking at programs, course surrounding the water and we may have a mobile tide pool coming, which should be really fun. And Chonki and some other groups that we usually do bring on. So we're looking forward to doing all that. We'll do some take and makes for the summer. We'll have in-house programs. We're looking at creative movement for a couple of different age groups. And a, a program with a device called a cricket, which I'm not very familiar with, but it's sort of a cross between CAD and, and a die cut machine. And we're hoping that we could do some training for people in the community who might want to do oh, some booster program or something. And we'll teach them how to use the machine and all they'd have to do is bring in their materials. So I'm looking forward to doing that. We're also going to buy a button maker, I believe, and have some fun with that. Let's see, what else would I mentioned? Right now, actually I'm in the process of cutting up paper and stuff for people to do take and makes my, my little garden journal made out of paper bags. This is just so silly, but it's also fun. And you know, we've got puzzles here now and just, you know, we had a bunch of kids come in today to do some homeschooling and yeah, things, things are, things are happening.
You mentioned something quickly. I didn't quite understand what it was. A mobile, what? A mobile? A mobile tide pool. What is that?
So it would be Chonki or another organization bringing in some kind of giant swimming pool with sea creatures like sea cucumbers, starfish, that sort of thing, where kids could have a hands-on experience. I don't know how then, I don't know the mechanics of it yet, but that's, that's one of the things we're bringing in.
Very cool.
Yeah, I'm excited about it. And we, of course, we're making all really bad puns, like whale come to the library. We'll have a contest for, you know, if, if people want to join in and make some kind of bad ocean puns, we'll reward them with free books or something. We're just trying to get into the spirit of it.
Cool.
Yeah.
When did you, when did your new book? Sign go up. I saw that on the way up here.
Today.
Today. Okay. I didn't notice it yesterday.
No, yesterday it was still the, the library is here for you.
Yeah.
And we didn't know that the theater had their banners ready, but I mentioned to Dennis yesterday, could he put it up today? Because this is, this is the month. And it just happily coincided. So he was up putting up all the banners at once, which is great. And good to see you back, Chris.
Good to be back. Thank you.
Look great.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
So the town office is in full swing, trying to prepare for the election. So they're all running around trying to, everybody's trying to get everything prepared, ballots and the absentee ballots are coming in and there's a lot of preparation going on in there for that.
Justin, folks, just for the, for the folks at home, folks can request their absentee ballots now.
Yes. They could send sometime in May. I can't think, maybe it was the 19th or something like that. As we talked last meeting about the, about the insurance issue over there. They consider it to be an attractive nuisance, which means that it attracts people that want to do bad things because it's very visible from the street and it looks available to be open. So the insurance company would like the entire building put behind a fence with, with clear signs that say that you should not enter in there. That being said, that the architect, the chair of the building committee and the construction manager was over there this morning, I believe to look at it. And I am sort of awaiting some direction from them about whether they had any recommendations to, you know, whether the construction manager thought there was some best practices that could go into place. If they don't have any recommendations, then we really will have to do whatever MMA wants, or they won't ensure that building. We can't be in that type of liability, especially if someone got in there and did get hurt. So I'll keep you all informed of that. They're going to come here for a site visit some, some week of June 13th. So ideally we would have a solution before they get here. I'll stay on top of that. That's all I, that's all I have for right now. Unless you want me to say out loud about the damn thing. We sent out a, the water district put out a notice. We put that on Facebook and they were going to spread it around in the that area. But basically the dam inspector says that the current water level can stay where it is for now. So it's down about, it's supposed to be down about a foot and a half is, is about where they think it's okay. It's just going over the gate area. Right now, Dan is working with Wendy to try to balance it out. We still have to let the water go through, but we're trying to make it so that it will stay at its current level and not keep dropping or get any higher. The two, the next steps that are being bantered about is whether we get a diver to basically dig down there as far as they can and put probes and pictures. They're thinking that it's the, it's the boards that are lateral in there. They think maybe one or two of them is rotted at the bottom. So there's nothing really holding the water back. So as that kind of keeps going, it's, it's seeping underneath. And because it's seeping underneath, it's drawing the material down in there. That would really be our best case scenario. If it's something else, it's going to be very expensive to fix. So it's either getting a diver or it's going out and hiring a contractor to put in sandbags and basically create a cofferdam and then dig it out. And then the engineer seems to be leaning towards that because he really wants to see what's what the whole picture is down there, not just what they can poke holes and kind of see. But a, a decision hasn't been made yet. I don't think, but they're kind of working through it with the state dam inspector and the engineer. Did you have anything else?
No, I was to say, that's my understanding as well, that they're preliminary stages of figuring out step one and yeah.
So for what it's worth, my opinion would lean towards the cofferdam and digging it all out and fixing it right, finding out what's a hundred percent what's wrong and fix it right.
Yeah.
Because you get, if you find out that you're going to have to do it anyway.
That's true.
So you might as well just do it.
Yeah. And one of the problems is that we have no drawing, we have nothing for that. So we can't tell the engineer what it looks like. The dam inspector doesn't really know. They're kind of making guesses on what it looks like from the top. And that's kind of dangerous because you don't really know what's down there. So probably that'll be where we go. But they're still having conversations about how to best do it. But for now, we think the water level is going to stay where it is.
Yeah.
Barring something letting go, it's going to stay at its current level.
Yes.
Until it's fixed.
Yeah. Unless when they decide what the procedure is to step forward, it means we have to draw it down more. But we won't know that till we have some concrete.
It's very shallow there now anyway, so it wouldn't take a lot of sandbags to dam that up. If you go over there, it's not very deep, anywhere within 10 feet of where that dam is now.
You have to round around the cofferdam though.
Right. Yeah. So we'll see.
Did, did I understand you correctly to say that there's some wooden elements to that?
I believe that's what's down there. I guess that's very common for these small kind of dams at the end of lakes. Cause that's how they were built.
When was the last time anything was done to that dam? I mean, I don't ever remember talking about it before.
We haven't found anybody that has any idea.
Dave, you have any recollection?
Herb, Herb did some metalwork on the gate crank about 18, 20 years ago. That's all I know of.
And somebody at some point did that practice where they shoot the concrete into those rocks. Cause underneath it, it's, it's rocks that they've basically forced concrete into all of the seams in it. So that was done at some point, but I don't know when that was done either. So.
That mechanism need to be replaced?
It does. Probably the whole little house there and then all that probably needs to be replaced. If we're going to dig it out and do it, it might as well be done because it's not in good shape. The little house, if you push on it, it rocks back and forth.
Would, somebody at some point fabricated a wedge to keep the teeth of the gate engaged with the mechanism.
What happened 18, 20 years ago. That's exactly what he did.
Okay.
Put a wedge in to keep the teeth to engage and replace the wheel.
Yeah. So it, it's, 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 is that?
It's end of life.
It's end of life.
I don't know. Dan Roy said a report.
I don't have it. He, did he just send it today or are you just?
Yeah, I just got it this afternoon.
Okay.
He sent it to you and to me.
Okay. I, I must have done.
He says that the fire department responded to several calls, calls the past two weeks, bringing the total to 67 for the year. About 150 people came to the Memorial Day breakfast. Parade and services went well, beautiful weather for activities. And last Thursday, there, they discovered a failure of the electric water heater flooded the boiler room. So the room is full of mold. Which they're going to mitigate this Friday. The scope of damage is unknown. Insurance claim has been filed with MMA. They'll need to hire a contractor for repairs. A boiler tech will inspect the boiler to determine if it was damaged.
So that was at the center station?
Yes. And beach party is four weeks away. So, and flyers and banners will be put up soon. And the committee is working on the late, the final. Next is flight board report.
Nothing here. I've got one. The economic development committee is proposing this survey to be distributed. It's a survey and a flyer to be distributed during the voting on June 14th. And it's essentially requesting voters to give us some guidance in terms of the direction that they would like to see the Tiff district funding allocated. So it's a
Yeah, I've seen it previous.
That's what I got.
Okay.
Did you want to talk about this?
Sure. Well, I have a couple of things. There was a, in the advertiser this past Friday, there was a, a little ad. And I, this is nothing, I don't think. It said, do you know the grant for clean water was diverted? To buy AR 15s for the Monmouth Police Department. How many policemen, policemen and women did active service or reserve time into service? There's been no town funding for a new generator that's needed to the sewer district, I guess, that serves some of the poorest parts of town. Do you know that all town employees are now union employees? Now, the, the police department no money was diverted. It was a, it was our, our funds, right, that were used to purchase the new weapons. And some, there are some policemen and women who served in the armed forces. At the, as far as town funding for a new generator for the sewer district, the sewer district is self-funded. The town doesn't buy equipment for them. And that not all town, town employees are union employees. The Public Works is, I guess.
Public Works and
And police department.
And police.
That's as far as I know.
Yes. And nobody else is so. This, I don't know if I should say who committee. It's, it's in the advertiser anyway. Maybe this next one too. And the, I received a note from Julie. Hi Julie. About the, the lake, the Cockawog and and so I I notified Wendy Dennis of the Copsy Watershed District of what, what you said. And she wanted to, I don't know.
I saw it. You forwarded it to me. I saw it.
Right. The question, you wondered about having a, like a go slower, lake wide sort of thing?
Well, I'm just wondering if, if the, if the this, if the level is low, boats are closer to the bottom and I'm seeing people like, I mentioned to you Doug, somebody I mentioned to you Doug, somebody with a pontoon party boat with two skiers behind it. And it it's really churning up the 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 plant material. Um, I was just wondering about some different options. So I was thrown out for like brainstorming purposes. You know, either a a go slower, lake wide, um, possibly. Also, I don't know what the possibility would be of of moving the swimming and the rec programs to to the North Monmouth Beach. Wh- where it isn't um. You know, the 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 debris in the water seemed like a lot. The clarity of the water seemed fine. It was just that. There's a lot of plant material seems like being churned up by boats. It it may be fine during the week. I I. Only went on Memorial Day weekend to swim and it just was. You know, not very pleasant and the and the boats just didn't seem to to uh. Be paying attention to that. It just seems like the lake is under stress, right? I don't know what Cobbsy Water said. She just said that she could. She could provide some signs um either lake wide or limit it to two hundred feet from the shore for the no wake. But, you know, I I don't know how much attention voters are gonna put to signs. I don't, I don't. Seems like they weren't paying attention to the no wake zones on Sunday. Um, I don't know. What what do people think about moving some of the activities to North Monmouth?
I don't think that beach is going to be open.
It would be a decision for the rec committee, uh, actually uh to to do that. They have a lot of equipment down there. So it would be difficult to uh.
That's true.
Yeah, uh, to change. And I I was, I was went down there uh yesterday and wandered around. And I thought it was, it's even though the water is low, uh. I thought it was kind of made some nice areas for for kids, uh, or kids who want to go out fishing. And uh, we're just standing on the shore and fish.
Yeah.
And uh, uh, I thought if if the, as far as the voting. Uh, and Wendy wondered too uh about uh at putting uh like a. Reducing speed lake wide, not just in the, but I mean, not really reducing it, just reducing it a little bit. Uh, but maybe, you know, reduce the number of people who might go out there with jet skis and tear around. Uh, but of course, the jet skis are so much better than they used to be. That uh, they're quieter and they're uh, of course, they are, they're. How much they go deep in the water is practically minimal. Uh, they kind of stay on top all the time. Only if you're going real fast.
So so that's the thing with speed. The slower you go, the more wave action you generate. I don't care what kind of boat you're operating. That's what. Happens. So you're better off not worrying about speed. My, I I have a bass boat. I can go seventy miles an hour and I create less surface disturbance at sixty miles an hour than I do at. Five miles an hour and less wave action. So. What you're seeing as far as the plant material is when you draw down anytime, whether it's the fall drawdown or whenever it is. Plants that have been growing in that area that is now become uh. Void of water or is or is more shallow than it was, those plant materials are going to break up regardless of whether you have. Just the wind and wave action is going to break them up. So there's there's actually more. More consistent surface disruption from a wind at twenty miles an hour than there is from any boat traffic you have on the lake. So it's, I understand your concern and and I understand you probably not have a lot of experience with boats. Uh, but boats really aren't the issue here. It's it's just the fact that the lake is down a bit. So you you that plant matter just uh. Breakup will subside once the the level is stable for a few weeks. Um, uh, but boat traffic is not gonna do anything. That the wind and wave action isn't gonna do all by itself, not with the, you know, we don't see twenty-four foot cabin cruisers out there, so. Dave?
Uh, and also the Lake Association, the people around the lake have been calling, they're setting up milk jugs and. Buoys on all the rocks that are protruding uh to keep that. Because we all know, anybody who's been on the lake for any amount of time remembers when it was at this level. It was at this level for quite a few, many, many, many years.
Yeah.
So all those rocks now are starting to show themselves. They haven't showed themselves in twenty-five years. So buoys are starting to go up and and people are aware that once you get close to the shore. You there there are some rocks. The rest of the lake is still at twenty-five feet. Don't, you know, it's it's still. Instead of twenty-seven, it's at twenty-five. I mean, you know, it's it's not that much different.
And as far as, as far as the two hundred feet from shore, that's that's navigation law. That's on any great pond, you're restricted to uh headway speed only within two hundred feet of any shoreline. It does, I mean, a warden can cite anybody regardless of any signs or not, because that's part of a boater safety course. That's part of. Uh, general law. And so uh, if you want to post a sign out there that says, you know. Uh, headway speed only two hundred feet from shore, that's fine, but that is general law.
Well, I, it just in my experience last year and this one time this year that I've been, pe- people weren't obeying that. Um, it wouldn't hurt to put a sign out, probably. Um. Don't know.
Well, as a law-abiding, rule-following person, Julie, you you uh will notice that, but I can tell you that there are more people. The chief can probably back this up. There are more people that disobey those laws than actually obey them at any given time.
It becomes a challenge.
So, you know, you can report, if you see a, I suggest, my suggestion is if you see a boater that's that's. Violating those safety standards in an egregious way that you get their their number. Every regist- every powerboat has a registration number.
Yep.
You know, carry some binoculars with you, get the registration number and report it to the game warden.
Okay.
You know?
I did, I did call the game warden last year on on people who had clearly. Been drinking and lost control of their jet ski around a bunch of kids. It just seemed dangerous.
And that's the best thing to do.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, thank you.
You don't, you don't need to, and if it's something like that, you can call the Monmouth PD and report that, you you know. They're closer than the game warden, so.
Right.
They're gonna be, they're gonna actually gonna be able to get there to the ramp when they try to come off and. And deal with it. So you've got multiple ways of addressing it.
Harold, that's good to know, because I thought it was only game wardens that could address that, so.
PD can enforce any law that's on the books.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Welcome. I think as a boater for like seventy years, I. I cannot judge distance, like I couldn't tell how far it is from from here to that wall. So when you say two hundred feet from shore. I have no idea.
The the span on one of those telephone poles and the other telephone poles about two hundred and fifty feet.
I'm right there with you.
Doug, twenty feet.
Forty feet here. I was hoping it was for.
But anyway, but before we move on, Mr. Chair, Julie brought that brought up an interesting. Point or an interesting observation about uh the rec program and the summer programs that are uh to begin shortly. And I, we had at the last budget talk, we had. Conversation about asking the recreation program to do some additional new things. And I'm wondering if. What's going on there and what's happening? And I, I don't know, perhaps we could invite the. Rec program to come talk to us about those issues at at the next meeting, perhaps.
Just speaking of the waterfront stuff, I've been talking with Lisa. She's got plans to to move the docks kind of around in different positions to try to make the best of. Of the water she has down there. I think she's gonna get rid of their. What do they call it? The swim camp or whatever the camp thing? I I can't remember what it's called. I'm sorry, I can't remember. But she's gonna get rid of that just because of the way that the. It's it's laid out and she just didn't think it'd be a good idea this year to do that. But she's gonna do most of her programming and she didn't think it would be a problem. As for the new programming, we can get Joe here and see if he's had any headway with either the rec commission or whatever. I don't have an answer for you. Sweet. So maybe, maybe next meeting.
What's going on with the North Monmouth Beach? Because I was under the impression, or I had heard. Fifteenth hand. That's the North Monmouth Beach.
Well, here's.
They weren't gonna have a toilet out there, because.
Right, well, here is the issue. I can't remember if we if we talked about this during the during the budget issue. For for public monies to be spent on private property, we have to have the townspeople allow it. So I'm really not allowed to spend money over there doing anything without the townspeople saying it. And we didn't. I can't remember when this came up. I don't, I don't know if our warrant was put together or whatever, but there isn't anything on this budget. So I know it's been a longstanding tradition in this town and I'm fine to do it as long as everybody is aware that it's not allowed. Moving forward, I would recommend if you want that to happen, that we need to put a warrant article that would expressly say that the town may expend X dollars. For that piece of property.
So even if it's in the rec budget?
We can't, we can't use public monies for private purposes on private property. So like, for example, in my last town, they had a five oh one C three rec center that was built. By the people. It's got its own board and everything. And the town had routinely plowed their driveway out. And. When I got there, it was the same thing. It was like, you can't do that. So we put a warrant article on there and the townspeople said, yes, we're gonna allow. Public works to go onto that private property with with the town equipment and expend public dollars on that private entity. So it's really that simple. We just have to have permission to do it.
And so the the North Monmouth Beach is not town-owned property?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. And so uh, so I would think that we would proceed with. I mean, my personal opinion and others can have different ones and that's fine. Um, but I would think that we would proceed with the tradition of. Doing what we've always done because it seems to work. And if the next time around, we need to invent a warrant item that says, hey, do you give us permission to spend? X on the North Monmouth Beach, which is a privately owned piece of property, then so be it.
So I'm not sure I can. I understand that I I, excuse me, Doug, I understand the thought process. I don't disagree with. The intent. The problem is it violates the statute and so. Um, anybody, any resident could bring suit against the town for violating knowingly, willfully violating that statute. So I don't think that's a position we want to put ourselves in. I. Would might be able to work with the people that own that and and uh try to come up with a solution where we get. Um, something for next year that would address the deficit from this year, but um. Where, you know, they put a toilet there and and we ask for money next year to to compensate for that. But I don't think we can. We can say we just choose to ignore a law because we've always. In ignorance annoyed it, uh, ignored it before. Then, once we become aware of it, we're we're bound by oath to follow it.
Don't we have a contract with the North Monmouth Community Club? Not that I'm aware of.
We have an agreement we signed.
Yes.
We do have an agreement that we signed, but it it uh. If it, I don't recall if it calls, if it specifies we put a toilet in there or not, but if we if we did, it's because we didn't realize that we. Couldn't do it by statute, but now we do know that we can't do it. So uh, that part of the agreement would be invalid anyway. Because any part of an agreement that violates a statute is invalid, is invalidated.
I think we haven't done it the last few years because of COVID anyway.
Yeah, and I think that.
So it hasn't been doing anything.
When they tried to find, and this is just what I heard, when they tried to find a person to. You know, a company to supply a toilet out there, nobody would do it because of the vandalism that's happened to them out there. That's what I was told.
I don't think it was vandalism. I think it was uh, just that Joe Fletcher had uh contracted with somebody to. Uh, put a toilet there and uh. And I guess finally, that summer, it there was one put there. Uh, I don't know who got. Maybe it was borrowed from a smaller place around.
It was, was borrowed from a little league, which is not a town-funded. Entity, so it didn't violate the statute.
Okay.
And and so you guys, Public Works, I'll just mow.
Well, I was just gonna say, I'm not gonna ask for guidance because I've inherited a policy that I mow and empty the trash at North Monmouth Beach.
And do we provide uh lifeguard, any lifeguard coverage at all?
Yeah, we haven't the last few years, but again, because of, because of COVID, because of COVID.
Yeah, but. We have it, so it's, yeah. So this is snowballing quickly.
And equipment. Equipment. This beach to that beach.
Right, yeah. Well, maybe, maybe we could wrap this into the same conversation with rec department about. In in a couple of weeks about figuring a way around that one, uh.
If if it's a, to me, if it's an issue that that is impactful. Um, we could call for a an in-person special town meeting. And if you get forty people to show up and they authorize the expenditure of the money, it's authorized. I mean, but the way I, the way I see this is whatever we were doing that we shouldn't have been doing, we have to stop doing it. Now, because we know we shouldn't have been doing it now. And then, like I said, if we need to address it with a special town meeting that's in person, we hold it someplace, high school. Could we, it comes then or whatever.
Could we uh use a segment of a standard select board meeting to hold an in. Uh, an in-person town meeting for the purpose of approving this?
Well, you could do it whenever, but we have to notice it the same way that we would notice a regular town meeting. So you'd have to have a, you'd have to have a public hearing. For the warrant article, then I'd have to, then we'd post it, just like we're doing right now for that. And then it would be a date certain at a certain time.
It's fine.
And if it's a real short, if it's a, it's a one item thing, you can make it be at. Six o'clock at night on a Tuesday and then it'll be over at six fifteen. I mean, that's how a lot of these things go sometimes, if it's a, if it's a nothing.
So it's an administrative, it's just an administrative exercise.
Yeah, but why, the only thing I'd have to check though is I'd have to check um when you guys voted at your town meeting. To go to a referendum. I don't know if you're allowed to go back without town meeting, letting you go back.
Yeah.
So I'll have to, I'll have to check on that.
And I would like to hear from the rec committee on how they feel about having that open out there anyway, so. And if there's staff, if they are capable of having that open out there. Because I think that's always been an issue too, staffing and having somebody out there, because we had a big discussion last year about. Staffing and lifeguards and.
Yeah, having a single person out there.
Sixteen-year-olds.
Right.
Being out there all by themselves, you know, which. I didn't think too much about it when I was a kid, but it's different today, so.
Or safer for you than anybody that came after you.
That's right.
So like, North Monmouth Committee Club then will hopefully supply or be able to pay for uh. A portable toilet.
Unless some other non-municipal entity decides that they want to help them with that for this year until this gets resolved.
Because it needs to be done quickly, because everything starts.
Oh, and like, like last year where the Little League said, we're not using this anymore because our season's over. We don't mind sending it to. North Monmouth Beach. If they're willing to do that again, then that would solve the issue for this year, that issue for this year.
But didn't somebody turn it over? Uh, I think uh we've got a hand up, that maybe Ben Lund has got his hand up. Is that true?
I I did in fact have my hand up, but I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes.
Yep, we can.
Oh, okay. I was just going to provide some friendly advice because.
There we go.
The the issue that you're discussing has to do with the constitutionality of the spending. So even though I know you, you, everybody hates to spend money with the town attorney, I would recommend that you check. I'm not sure that a warrant article alone solves your problem.
Okay. I'll check with our attorney. I know the opinion of a different attorney that I had in my last town, but but they all have different opinions, so that's good advice.
Why we have courts. Why we have courts and courts of appeal and the Supreme Court.
So that is very good advice. I will ask.
Thank you, counselor.
So we should, uh, uh, what's his name?
Timmy.
Timber.
Timber. Uh, so somebody, maybe somebody should check with Tim Burden to see if what his plans are, uh, what, what, what he's making. And who, should I be doing that?
I'm, I'm wondering if maybe we could just in invite, we could have a rec night at our next meeting and see if we can untangle some of these.
And we'll have a legal opinion by then.
Right. Yeah.
When, when is rec doing sign up though? They do it early. I know they do. I don't know when they start. They seem to.
But they don't.
Be having it like as soon as school is not even out.
I don't think they had, unless I'm wrong, I don't think they were doing swimming lessons out there. They only just had a lifeguard.
Right.
I mean, they just had a lifeguard when they actually could man it. Um, so they weren't doing swimming lessons out there. Yeah.
When do you guys, Public Works have to, uh, put the rafts down there and so forth?
At the Cockawoggin or?
Yes.
Uh, we're doing that. We're moving them down next Wednesday, the eighth and Thursday, the ninth at six thirty AM where we direct to hit the docks in the water. We are not been directed to do anything at North Monmouth Beach.
Right.
Uh, for rafts or docks or lifeguard stands other than the inherited policy of we mow it and empty the trash.
Yeah. There's never been a, for a number of years, there's been anything put out there. But since your wife knows a lot about North Monmouth Beach, she loved that place. Be a lifeguard there, everything. Okay, um, public comment. What do you have on like? Okay, next is to consider approving the Kennebec County Hazard Mitigation Plan twenty twenty one update.
Yes. So this is something that the county puts together. They have a, they have a committee with the MEMA and all that, and they put together this, they just update it every couple of years. And this is really just a formality for you to just say that you're accepting the county's recommendation to do this, to make the updates to the plan. It's a big giant document like that.
How come it's not twenty twenty two?
Because I think it just takes them that long. This is basically, they were doing it through this process and I think it got slowed down a lot with everything that's going on. I think they're just getting around. I'm not sure if it has to be done every.
I know.
I can't remember every, every so many years. I'm not sure how many. So I'm not sure what, when the next one would be, but it's not, I don't think it's an every year thing.
Move we approve the Kennebec County Hazard Mitigation Plan twenty twenty one update.
Second. So this is a motion by Harold, the second by Kent to approve the Kennebec County Hazard Mitigation Plan twenty twenty one update. All those in favor? Thank you. Uh, next is to consider approving a letter to the Kennebec County Commissioners urging them to support broadband extensions.
So this is a, this is a letter that was sent out to all municipalities of Kennebec County. It was sent by Amy Davidoff, who is the chair of the Vassal Borough Ed Talk broadband committee, Sam, sorry if I don't say this, Newman, Maine Broadband Coalition, and Peggy Schaefer from Connect Maine. She's the executive director. So they're the ones that were asking to try to, my understanding is that the Kennebec County Commissioners haven't been interested in using any of the ARPA money for broadband projects and they're trying to prod them into doing so. So this is just an option. If you think that that's a good idea, I'm just putting it for you to decide whether you wanna urge them to do that or not.
Oh, yeah. If we urge them to do this, would that come at the expense of the Kennebec County Commissioners, uh, not spending their ARPA funding on, uh, supporting our sanitary district?
I don't know. And I don't, I don't know the full extent of their plan.
Yeah. So there are a number of competing plans here and we have already supported one at the Kennebec County Commission level for our trunk line uh, that, uh, needs repair in, in Manchester. It's not in Monmouth, but because Monmouth is at the end of the line, uh, we rely on that trunk line quite substantially. So, I mean, I'm, I'm generally supportive of broadband. I think broadband's great, good, good, good real estate development process if we can increase bandwidth for, you know, uh, for, uh, access to bandwidth for, for anybody in town. But it seems to me like as a board, we've already committed to supporting the trunk line for the sanitary district despite sanitary district people advertising against us. I think maybe we could at least say to the sanitary district, uh, we have supported you, uh, specifically with the Kennebec County Commissioners.
I agree.
And, and isn't the state already committed to, or, or maybe federal government?
There's, there's some money in the federal infrastructure bill. The state has committed money with their new authority that they've set up. So yes, there is other places that are potential.
The, the, the focus is gonna be in more rural areas that don't have, uh,
Any.
Any.
Right.
Any.
Internet.
Yeah. And you know, I, I, uh, there's a lot of, there is just a tremendous amount of technological innovation happening right now with wireless communication. Uh, and just for example, uh, the town of Litchfield, Litchfield spends their ARPA money on incentivizing a certain contractor to, uh, boost, uh, their, uh, what's the, it's a site to site, uh, type of transmission. Uh, no, no, it's a different, this is new. This is actually, uh, cutting edge stuff. And that they subsidized a contractor to boost it so that, you know, a couple hundred people with, with no, uh, broadband access.
Hot spot.
Yeah, it's a similar type of thing. Um, anyway, people in Monmouth are actually gonna be able to enjoy that, uh, for an unsubsidized price from that red zone, uh, provider. If you're within sight of the Oak Hill Tower, you'll be able to, uh, uh, connect to them shortly at, uh, very substantial, very substantial. Yeah, very substantial speeds. So lots of, lots of moving parts that don't necessarily require a one size fits all state type of solution. So I would, uh, I would say, uh, we decline to sign off on this.
I agree. Okay, so motion.
Do we need a motion?
I don't think you need one.
You don't need one. We're gonna move on.
Okay.
We're not gonna take it action. We don't need a motion.
Simply ignore it. We just, we just put it in our back pocket.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, next is to, uh, authorize the reappointment of Richard Howard as election warden until December thirty first, twenty twenty two.
I make a motion, we authorize Rich Howard as our election warden until that time.
A second.
I'll let you second. No, you've been in my head. You can second.
Kent made a motion and Chris seconded it to, to authorize the reappointment of Richard Howard as election warden until December thirty first, twenty twenty two. All those in favor? Thank you. Next is to consider updating the events application form.
You wanna take this? This is, this is your.
Yeah.
Committee. I can go over it if you want.
Yeah, you go ahead.
Okay. So the only real, um, change in here is Reagan put it out there, but it's basically the way that the amount requested comes out. So right now, I think there was a cap of, of a thousand dollars, which we have, um, routinely gone over for the beach party. They did like three thousand. This change would allow it to be a thousand dollars with no match or fifty percent of the event cost. So it basically takes the, the cap off. So they would come before you and if they had something that was, um, five thousand, they'd need to raise twenty five hundred instead of, 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 of the current practice. So that's, that's the change, basically.
The, the Economic Development Committee thought that this was a good idea to, uh, encourage applicants to be thinking about matching funds before they apply. That's essentially what this is. For small amounts, uh, perhaps we don't need to be as, uh, demanding for matching funds, but for large amounts, uh, we thought it was prudent to, to, at least at the application stage, uh, insist that an applicant have some sort of, um, you know, match.
I have no objection.
We need a motion for that? Uh, probably because it's a TIF document, basically. It's a TIF.
I need a motion to update the events application form for TIF funds.
Second. So Chris made a motion, Harold seconded it to update the events application form for the TIF program. All those in favor? Thank you. Uh, next is warrant number twenty four.
All states construction, bit concrete. Is that what, that, that's what she put on here for a note? All states construction? Yeah, it's a hundred nineteen thousand. I just, I'm not, she, she put bit concrete is my note. Is that what that?
Oh yeah, that was, uh, finished paving of Warren Road.
Okay. There we go. Uh, debts hardware, uh, supplies, Bernstein Shore, our legal retainer, one thousand forty one, Blue Rock Earthworks, recycling, two thousand four hundred sixty five, Central Main Power, two thousand nine hundred and eighty six, Derrigo Wireless Pagers, three thousand one hundred ninety two, Election Systems and Software. This is, this is how we set up the, the tabulators for the election, three thousand five hundred and sixty three dollars. Fielding oil and propane, two thousand five hundred and forty two for heating fuel, mainline fence. Those are those fence panels at the building over there, two thousand four hundred dollars, main municipal association workers comp, seven thousand two hundred ninety six, main waste to energy, one thousand nine hundred and forty two, northeast emergency apparatus, fit testing and repairs, three thousand one hundred and seventy seven dollars. Otis Elevator Company for elevator testing, one thousand one ninety five. Paris Farmers Union for calcium, nine thousand sixty, Paul Designs Project, the architect for the said building, seventeen thousand six hundred and eighteen. RSU two, four hundred and forty nine thousand two hundred and twenty five, Treasurer State of Maine for motor vehicles, five thousand seven hundred and ninety three, five thousand two hundred and seventy nine, and five thousand two hundred and four. Treasurer State of Maine, inland fisheries and wildlife, sixteen thousand five hundred and eighty nine. You tell it's voting season. United Construction and Forestry, John Deere Repair, six thousand eighty nine, and USDA Rural Tax Development, tax overpayment of one thousand five hundred and three dollars.
I need a motion to approve warrant number twenty four.
Second.
So a motion by Chris, second by, uh, Kent to approve the, uh, warrant number twenty four. All those in favor? Thank you. And, uh, before we go into executive session, uh, I meant to, uh, at the request of, uh, the, uh, the transfer station person, uh, I, uh, I've been asked to ask about, um, having transfer station stickers.
Yes, we, we talked about that the last meeting and I just, I actually wrote it on my note here. I contacted a vendor to buy them. And then I haven't, and he sent me a thing and I said, okay, and I haven't followed up. I don't know where they are. So I gotta, I gotta check on that. It made me think of it tonight when we were talking about. It just dawned on me when I was sitting here. Harold said to get sticker, stickers. I, I gotta follow up. So yeah.
Person, the, the person, the transfer station person, for you know, is, but this person thought it was, uh, a better use of money to buy stickers rather than have somebody stand there.
I agree with him.
So.
Well, apparently the decision's been made, so, okay.
The decision was made at the last meeting. And that, that's what the, that's what the board.
If we go to stickers, how are we gonna handle, you know, the, the free things that are on the back? So I don't know if we ever, did we address that? Did we talk about it?
We, we did. We, we, we wanted to talk about it more before we actually. What, I, I could tell you what, uh, what green does, which is, I think, uh, you know, a, a good way of doing it is they, they, anybody that wants a, a, a card, a punch card could come in. They pay an administrative fee. I think it's five dollars in green. It could be three dollars for us or whatever. And that's just to cover the cost of of getting the cards made up and, and, and handing them out. But the, in green, if my memory serves correctly, the person that I spoke with said, they get about a hundred and seventy five dollar value out of the five dollar card, depending on what they have to dispose of. And it could be anywhere from, they say, point five dollars in disposal fees to, you know, well over a hundred, depending on what they have to, to dispose of. Um, so I thought that was a pretty reasonable way to, to, to handle that.
And you don't get complaints, uh, or do they get complaints that I pay my taxes?
I, I, I don't know anybody that doesn't get a complaint about something.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, but I, the, the time that I was there, I, I asked those type of questions and, and I didn't get any sense that they had a problem with, uh, with that at all. Um, they're, they're set up. It's a little different the way it's mapped out, but it's the same things that we do. Um, but yeah, I just thought that was a good idea that, you know, it would save, just for general admission purposes. You drive in, you got a sticker on, any attendant can see you've got that sticker. And if you don't have a sticker, they come and, and check you. You don't have a sticker. And what's, what's the story? I'm from Manchester. Goodbye.
And if you don't wanna put a sticker on your car, then you can put it on a little.
You can put it on a piece of cardboard and set it on your, on your dash when you go to the transfer station. Same thing.
And I can't use my Manchester sticker in Monmouth.
You can drive. Trudy won't let you get away with that.
What does Winter do?
I don't know. I haven't talked, I haven't talked to Winter.
They have stickers or?
They had stickers. They're like, I think they're like twen, they're either twenty dollars a year or twenty five dollars every two year. And it lets you throw away all, as much household rubbish as you want. But they have compactors on, on their site. And then everything else, they have a scale house. So everything else you pay to get rid of, basically.
That's just like Lewiston.
Yep.
Lewiston has the same thing. They have a scale house.
You know, there's a booth there. You have to drive up as an attendant. You weigh, you come back out, you weigh again, and then they charge you.
Yep.
So.
Uh, just one more thing. I was just, before we go into that, I just, um, and this is more just of a general caution, something to be thinking about, um, every elected official is, uh, qualified immunity, um, which I think everybody understands what that is. If, if we were to knowingly, um, agree to a policy or violate a, a statute or do something that was not legal with, that would abrogate that qualified immunity. It would be the same thing as if a police officer, um, in the discharge of their duty violated a law. Qualified immunity doesn't cover criminal conduct. So it's just something to think about while we're, we're always trying to do the right things and think the right things. It'd be nice to people, but it's just something to keep in the back of your mind.
Okay. Executive session.
I make a motion, we, uh, go into executive session pursuant to one MRSA four oh five six G.
Second.
Labor negotiations.
Labor, labor negotiations.
One of the new requirements you have to say.
I have to say it.
Have the same script, guys.
Thank you.
Where are you headed?
New York.
New York.
Have fun.
Wedding.
Wedding.
And, and a fight of the tournament.
And food, pizza.
And food.
Only if you bring gifts.